Okay, we will call the December fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please read the role?
Welch.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
We are all present.
Okay, thank you. Let us stand and say the flag. Kelly, would you like to lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's standing for looking really good this evening?
You should even help yourself there, too. Okay, is there any order of business for emergencies, Carolyn?
None.
And attendance on Zoom?
We have Stan on Zoom.
Okay, I would call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Rick's moved.
Second.
Kelly, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. So that brings us to the police report. Welcome.
Oh, looks like we had two arrests last month. Does it usually go through like everything that happened?
Everything.
Everything.
Don't believe everything.
Looks like there were about thirty traffic stops, some motors assist, couple thefts, and some extra patrols. Nothing, not a whole lot moving after it gets dark out, so.
Dark and cold.
Yes.
Well, the good news is I noticed that you only did twenty-nine warnings and one citation. Or I should say you did twenty-nine warnings and only one citation. So you're definitely working with our citizens, for sure.
Correct.
Just to try to get them to proceed a little bit more carefully, probably.
Yeah.
And the school zone, I see there's seven items there. What does that mean? Do you know what that?
Well, I just got clarification on that, too. I thought it was a school zone traffic stop, but it's just working the school zone. So that's between the early morning hours when the, when it's flashing. Just to inform, just to sit there and kind of be prudent. So a lot of those are probably mine. Because I changed it to that, yeah.
Okay.
I just like to go sit there and slow people down because they're coming off the interstate and they're just flying down that road.
Exactly. Okay, any other questions for the deputy this evening?
Two assaults again. Car fights, or?
I don't know what the assaults were, honestly. I think one of, one or two of them, they must have been both happened with other deputies that don't work well.
You just witnessed one in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, with that being said, thank you very much.
Yes. Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you.
Be sure to take cookies with you.
Oh, I can't. I just ate.
Okay, well, about midnight, they might be good. Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Mike's moved?
Second.
Dan has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, so we have visitor there here tonight with us, Tim from K L J.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. Dana had another meeting tonight, so he apologizes for not making it over, but excited to work through these couple of them. So I think it looks like first on the agenda to touch on the change order for Hanson Sub. And also we have a pay app, pay request for that project as well. As far as the change order goes, there's a larger change order, as you can see in there. This essentially finishes out the infrastructure for that Hanson subdivision project, being water sewer, electrical, and then gravel street with a change in the street. We had originally planned for concrete curb and gutter. Been working with mayor and some folks here, we have made a change to accommodate ditches next to the street, primarily due to budget. It's certainly a more affordable way to go there. So with all that, a little update on the project as a whole, I guess. Todd does have water and sewer in on the Kelly Ave portion. He's ready to start moving some dirt to shape the street and then also incorporate the water and spool ran over on the Gloria Avenue part as well. We did want to mention, just with this change order, in comparison with the kind of finished product that this change order would incorporate in, comparison back to our original cost estimates, we're at about that four hundred and eighty-nine thousand. With this change order, our contract price would be right at about that three hundred and sixty thousand. So bringing the project together to close it out, about a hundred and thirty thousand, under what was originally anticipated, so. Due to some of that value engineering of the curb and gutter, ditches and some competitive prices, excuse me, things like that, so. Yeah, looking, we're comfortable with it and certainly recommend approval of that change order. I don't know if you want to touch on the pay app, too, right now, or echo that, or what works.
Do we approve the change order? Which is change order number two, right? It's this far.
Yep.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve change order number two?
So moved.
Dan's moved. And Jerry has seconded. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the change order number two has been approved. Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Awesome. And then also with that Hanson Sub project, we do have a pay app here tonight. When that pay up came in, work that was completed, there's actually been more completed since. But as far as this pay up goes, was mainly a couple of removals. There was a couple of water service lines that had been put in, but primarily was the sewer main, sewer service lines, and then a large amount of gravel had been stockpiled for the street as well. So that's primarily what you're seeing on tonight's pay up for that project.
Okay, so then we need to approve that also?
Yes.
Okay, so with that being said, the pay order is for eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents? John, have a.
Moved.
Second.
Mike moved or seconded. Any questions? Comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
And then Echo Valley, is that what we're moving on to next?
Yeah, number eleven, I think. That's where I'm at. Is that where you're at?
That's where I'm at.
Okay, good.
Just making sure I'm not missing anything. Thank you. Yes, so Echo Valley subdivision, phase number one. We did hold a bid opening in the last third day, I believe, December first. Three bids were received, did look favorable. The bids were all pretty comparable. Prices reasonable and competitive as well. Apparent low bidder at that bid opening is Quality Driven Services, with a total bid of one point four two five million. That would complete the water sewer, electrical conduit, again shaping the road and gravel surface for the road down through that Echo Valley section. So we took that, took those bids back. We did do a check of the bid tab. Evaluated for clerical mistakes, no clerical mistakes found with the low bid there. And then we did compare to our original engineer's estimate and about two hundred and ninety-one thousand below engineer's estimate for that project. So I'm pretty excited about that part. Otherwise, bid bond, all those things in place. And with that all being said, I should add, we have worked with Quality Driven Services. We're actually working on another project just north of Rapid City as well, and it's going well. No concern on Dana's end or anything.
They're from Rapid?
I think they're, it's a Box Elder address, but they work in that area.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah, and they're working on, I think it's a school, inside look on school that they're looking on, I believe. So. So, yeah, all in all that being said, we were excited to see, to get some bids and then see the bids coming where they're at. And certainly comfortable recommending avoiding that to Quality Driven Service.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Looking at that, I mean, any, first of all, I was so excited to have more than one bid, or a bid. First of all, a bid and then more than one bid, and then for it to come in under was very, very good. So with that being said, then, would I have a motion to approve the Quality Driven Services bid for one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents?
I'd make that motion.
Kelly has moved?
Second.
And Dan has seconded. Any further questions or concerns? Discussion. Jerry, do you have something there? You're studying a lot.
Not just laying it all.
Looking at all those numbers. Okay, all right. So with that being said, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, bid is approved.
With that, I might touch on a couple other projects real briefly, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
Well, I should add, as far as Echo goes, you know, with the templo proving that bid, we'll coordinate with the contractor further, but they were kind of sounding like an early spring, March type start date. So we'll, we'll hear more about that, I'm sure, if we look forward to it, if it's posted there. Otherwise, Echo Valley, we talked about industrial park development and lift station, no huge changes there. No waiting around some parts and pieces of pumps. Last update we heard there was January of twenty. So they're, they're coming. Those lead times are challenging, but. Otherwise, Port Avenue reconstruction, nothing big there either. Design is ongoing. We're still working on that, so we'll keep you posted there. We talked about Hanson and then twenty-twenty-one street improvements. I'm extremely optimistic tonight. I have, I believe it's, I have Fordson's landscaping on Rapid City that I think is going to meet up with us over here to take a look at some of that finisher. And that you talked about, you won't do that, so. Think I've got a fish on the line, but we'll get him over here. And otherwise, working on that price reduction as well. Dana's been busy, busy, but I'll see if I can help him with that as well, so. Any other questions for me?
My question? Thank you very much for keeping things, keeping us so informed and keeping things in front of us, so I appreciate that, Tim.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, that brings us to item twelve, public comments, which is a time of three minutes for anyone to address the council, but no decisions or action will be taken. Does anyone have any public comments tonight? Okay, number thirteen is permits. We have a building permit for John and Melody Dietrichs.
Move to approve.
Jerry moves to approve?
Aye.
And Dan seconded. Any questions or comments? And Garrett has signed off on this, so, yes. Okay, with that being said, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then we have a conditional use permit from M and M for their storage units. To approve that. Okay, Kelly's moving to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike seconded. Any further questions or concerns? Are you okay?
Do we, do we know how many, sorry, Jen, the two that are there?
This is just a renewal.
Okay, so renewal?
Not received any complaints or anything.
Okay. He really does keep his premises very tight, so. Okay, is there a motion to approve this condition?
No, we have to vote now.
Oh, did we already do that? Okay, sorry about that. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Two or three, especially if you have kids at home. Okay. All right, Wall Chambers report.
I'm killing to get that.
Good, thank you.
The Chamber Pancake Suffer will be held this Wednesday at the Wall Drug. They still are looking for a few volunteers, if anyone is available, and we'll take anyone. Pancakes will start, will be starting to serve at five P M.
And, and really will start serving at four thirty.
Probably four, because that's what.
Kind of go shoot target for four thirty?
Yeah.
And, but really the event is from five to six thirty.
Yeah.
I don't know when Santa comes.
Five.
Five?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, I know last year I came at a quarter after and people were already lined up and eating.
They were last year.
Yeah.
We will accelerate that.
Yeah. So, anyway. So if anyone wants a volunteer to help serve, clean tables, clear up, clean up, we sure appreciate it. And the Chamber is once again organizing a holiday lighting contest. While community, community members are encouraged to celebrate the holiday season by decorating their homes with various Christmas decorations. The Chamber Board will be judging the contest on December twenty-second. So every, if anybody's going to decorate, have their decorations up by then and are giving away a total of six hundred dollars in wall bucks as prizes. And then finally, the Chamber is once again encouraging local spending by hosting the Chamber Holiday Sweepstakes. The event will run through, has started already, and will run through January second, and the prize drawn will be held January fourth. A total of twenty-six hundred dollars in wall bucks prizes will be given. And that's what we have for this meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Okay, all economic development, Kelly.
Good evening. Um, I'd first like to update you guys on our Aging in Place Committee. We recently met with Cornerstone Caregiving, and that's Randy Mason, who grew up here in Wall. She's the Director of Operations there at Cornerstone Caregiving. We are committee chair, Kelly Austin, then had seen, she posted on Facebook that she's now doing at-home senior care in Rapid City. So we reached out to her and asked if she'd be willing to expand that out this way. So they're working with her to get wall residents out with the care they need because we have found that a senior living facility just won't work here. So we're definitely looking at alternative solutions, and this is one of them. So it is non-medical at-home care. Patients can customize their care plan. Some of the services they offer are medication reminders, bathing, dressing, physical therapy exercises, laundry, light housekeeping, and even pet care. They do offer a twenty-four-seven care option as well, so. You know, if anybody who needs that service, please reach out, and I can also give you her contact information. Next.
I'm sorry, Kelly, so, so that is set up. I can't carry on.
Yep, it's, recently had a meeting last week, and, yeah, it's being offered through people on Wall now. And she has said that if enough patients are in this area, she would potentially hire someone here in Wall to take care of those patients, so. Yeah, it's great news, and Randy definitely has a passion for helping the Wall community, so she was really excited about bringing it here to Wall, so we're looking forward to working with her. Next, I wanted to update you guys on our annual meeting. It was a success and a really good turnout. We had a guest speaker, Daniel Ainsley, the Sturgis City Manager. He had a great presentation about economic development in the city and the community, all working together. I wanted to recognize the award recipients. Zach Hoffman here was awarded the Business Development Leader Award. Brett Blazius won the Community Enhancement Award. Dakota Skystone had the Business Retention and Expansion Award. And the Pennington County Commissioners were our twenty-twenty-two Friend of Economic Development. Stephen Edo will be retiring from the board this year, but Jackie Heather Shaw is filling his place. The Fifth Annual Parade of Lights was a success. Thank you to you guys for allowing us to close Main Street and shut off the lights. It was a good turnout. It was a little different this year from what I had heard from people. We had a lot of people lined up over there on South Boulevard, as well as on Glen Street. Right in front of, we probably had fifty people come out of the Red Roof to watch, so. That was good. A total of fourteen floats. First Interstate Bank won the brightest float. Wayne and Melanie Scholl were our parade marshals, and the judges chose to give them the Christmas Spirit Award. And R A A won the Most Unique Christmas Cheer Award. And Tim already updated you guys on the industrial park, so that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Okay. So Carolyn, a video lottery follow-up.
Well, I'm not sure if you remember, a couple of months ago, I brought forward the option of doing like a consumption-only permit, and we did put that into our ordinance. And I kind of mentioned the video lottery and wanted to give you guys time to think about it. So now I'm actually asking if I can work with Stephanie to maybe draft an ordinance. I just feel our ordinance is unclear. It doesn't even make sense to me. So I really have struggled, you know, enforcing anything I don't understand. And so I just would like permission to work with her and put something together to bring back to you guys so we can have a more understandable and working option.
When was that adopted, being there?
Oh. Before my time. I was going to say, you know, maybe like in eighty-eight? So, I don't know.
Later nineties, early two.
Right. So I just think we need to look at it and see if, you know, it would be a way of making it more understandable and, and give you some different scenarios, you know, just to get a discussion started. So get that consensus to start on the step, even if it's okay.
This is, agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is that okay with you, Dan, to allow her to work with the attorney?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. All right. So that brings us then to the first reading of ordinance twenty-two oh five, the Tax Incentive. And this is the first reading for the ordinance, which is the property tax rebate, and it is not for any more than five years, and it will be reviewed and reevaluated each year to determine the continuation.
And that was kind of the only change. It was already in there that it would be for five years, but after discussion at last meeting and that, I just wanted to have it in there that it will be, or could be looked at every year and, you know, change is made to it. Not, not saying that we will, but it gives us that option to, to reevaluate that every, so. Since there was such a discussion about it, because last meeting would have been a second reading of it, we were going to do away with it, but we had some different input on that, so we need to kind of start the first reading since it's going a different direction.
Yeah.
So.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two oh five as presented?
So.
You said that. Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Dan has seconded. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item eighteen. And this is a resolution to replace, repeal and replace, Resolution seventeen oh three and seventeen oh four. Again, this was reviewed again because of the city agreeing to put in so many dollars toward infrastructure of water sewer and road in the new housing developments. The committee had, first of all, changed it to not allowing any taxes any, but then input again, would you say, Carolyn? Caused us to rethink that. So now the percentage would be a hundred percent rebate for the first year, eighty percent, second year sixty percent, third year forty percent, fourth year and twenty percent for the fifth year. And the resolution also provides a formula example on how that would be figured as it did before. Any comments?
Well, I, I just wondered, Carolyn, you know, it talks about the breakdown of the percentages, and then it goes twenty percent rebate the fifth year, and, and then just please leaves that kind of hanging, is it?
Well, it just goes and whereas, all, all of those paragraphs have those ands.
They do.
That's how a resolution is written.
It is. It's just how it's done.
Therefore, whereas.
Okay.
I have a question. Normally, the reason, the formula reads like twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, hundred. And you kind of, the way you said, hundred, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty. So I don't know how it's worded. I didn't see, but normally when they do the resolution of these formulas, it usually says twenty, forty, sixteen, eighty, hundred. I understand what you mean by saying you're going to reimburse hundred percent first year, but I think normally they say it's a zero. Is that what you're saying? You're going to reimburse hundred percent first year? So it's going to be zero?
It depends on just.
So it just, I, I didn't see the wording, but this is what normally I've seen in the past, the way the formula reads. Because when you said it, it's, when you said hundred, for me, it's, that's mean they're going to pay hundred percent of their taxes, the way I see it, because what I've seen in the past, it just kind of reads weird right now, what you say.
Well, we are.
I understand the meaning.
We're going to reimburse a hundred percent.
Yes, I understand that part. It's just, the way you said it is just.
No, I think it's written okay, because it says a hundred percent rebate. So that for the first year, so a hundred percent rebate will be all.
See, I didn't see how it reads.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying.
Yeah. Which is the same as zero twenty-four. Okay, dude, any other questions or concerns?
Well, I, I still don't. It seems like, I know maybe this is the way it's always written, but it seems like it almost should say, and, and after the fifth year, no rebate or something. Just because we take it to the fifth year and it's at twenty percent, just seems like it should go to the next year when there's no rebate.
I could put in there with the sixth year, no rebate given?
Yeah, I, I mean, just something like that, just for clarity. Yeah.
So what's the next where as stand for, then, that says there shall be no more than five consecutive?
I'm just laughing because you guys, this is the way they're always written.
Really reading stuff.
The last two orders are resolutions were written like that as well. I, I don't know why. They, that's just the way a resolution is done.
So then, if we're going to make that, can we approve it with this edit?
That's up to you guys.
Or do we?
It's just the teeny of it. Take it out. I don't care.
No, and that's fine, because this kind of works with the ordinance twenty-two dash five oh five. So, I mean, it's going to come back for a second reading. This resolution can come back then, and then they'll mesh together and support each other. Make that change, if you would like.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so.
Make the change with the sixth year, no rebate in there, and then they'll both come back.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything with this at this point in terms of, okay, great. That moves us right on to number nineteen. Okay. So first of all, I would like Okay, so first of all, I would like Dan to give us a brief update on the ambulance board, if you would, please.
Angel and Lilia have worked their butts off on this. They've put in hours trying to get all this stuff very well. I just want to thank them for that. Angels taking a online QuickBooks certification course, which she will then be certified in, and her husband Michael has agreed to pay for that course, which is almost seven hundred dollar course. So that won't cost the ambulance district anything. Have most of the issues with the balances taken care of. I think she's got it all. There were some double entries and double charges, and so she's got that, I think, pretty well zeroed out. We're really working on the to get the overtime cut down, trying to get these shifts filled with other people. We've been putting a lot of work into it trying to get this done.
I heard somebody else quit recently. Is that true?
Board or him all?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, but he wasn't, that person wasn't the VMT.
Okay, yeah.
And he just got a degree and ended up moving towards that degree, I believe. Never got certified. I mean, I don't, I don't know if he ever finished the course. So did the overtime, did that seem to be kind of a contributing factor?
That's a big factor.
Okay, that's what I was gonna, just checking.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for the people that are working really hard on that situation. Another thing is that Garrett and I attended the Western Dakota Regional Water System Annual Meeting in New Underwood on November twenty twenty-two. This, it was a very well-attended meeting, including people from Pier were there. They talked about their long-term goals and what their plans are to get water from the Missouri River to the Black Hills. And Cheryl Chapman, who is executive director, has asked to come and speak to us at one of our city council to also share that information with us and how that's all coming about, what's been spent, where the dollars are coming from. And one of the things that she'll probably be talking to us about is the membership dues. And they range from, you could be an associate member for three seventy-five, class two member for seven hundred and fifty, class one for fifteen hundred. So that might be something we would want to consider. Lyman Jones is working with these folks very closely, as I understand from what they shared that day. Lyman Jones Pipeline will, they'll have to build another one. They will. The water they're pulling from the river will exceed the size that Western, our West River Jones can accommodate. So it was very interesting, told us about where our water comes from and why it's really important for snow on the hills to add up, and that's what causes our, our wells to stay flowing. So we can expect that to, Cheryl to be here at one of our future meetings.
Mary, what is the membership? What does it do for us? I, or what do we do for them, or, well, what does it entail there, so?
If you're seven fifty, you're a voting member on the board. A three seventy-five associate is not a voting member. The only thing that I am, one of the things they did is they had a speaker in from Lewis and Clark Water System, which is, was the first one in eastern South Dakota, and it's about thirty, thirty-five years old. And one of the things he pointed out was that the people that did not get on board to begin with now can't get water. And interesting enough, one of those cities was Mitchell. Another one was Brad, Brandon Valley. And there's a third one. And Mitchell has just put, it's been in the news very recently, they can accommodate no more growth because they do not have the water to accommodate growth. And they didn't get involved with this thirty years ago. So it's just, you know, when she gets here and she explains that to us, that might be something we want to get involved with, because in the future, you don't know what our water system situation will be if our wells happen to go down. I think we're having trouble with one right now. You're not here to explain that, but.
Well, well, number four has been down, and I don't know if you guys noticed the West River Lyman Jones contract that we have with them. Usually it's a monthly charge of thirty-five hundred, that's what our contract is. But because well four was down, we used more water and we used up all of our reserves that we've been banked. And so our monthly mills were more, just because we had to start paying. Now this month, we're back to the thirty-five hundred. I doubt that we're gonna be able to bank in more water than we have in the past when we have a well now.
And granted, this isn't gonna happen for ten, fifteen years. I don't know how long it's gonna take them to build the pipe all the way across this half of the state. So it's not an overnight fix, but you don't want to sit on your hands and not get involved when the price is kind of right. So, but I'll let her explain that to you. I'm just letting you know, Garrett and I both attended that, and we learned a lot about water that day.
What did we, it was the conversation about West River Lyman Jones that we had where we had to kind of make a decision if we were going to jump on board or not. What, what did that entail? Do you remember, Carolyn?
Well, we could increase, so, and I don't know what the gallon, gallons is that our contract is right now, but we could have increased that along with an additional monthly charge. But at that time, we had quite a few gallons banked, but realized, you know, that well four must be a very quick-producing well for us that kept us ahead, but it caught up to us instead. So, and at that time, we just didn't, I guess, think it was. Well, and the council has always said, we don't want to give up our wells, for sure, but we really struggled. It was only the one person who works on this, but there might be another option for someone else that maybe Garrett's gonna be able to reach out to, so we'll see where that goes.
Will there be two separate pipelines then, or they just can enlarge the one that?
They'd be too separate. And they're, they're not sure at this point what even the route is. But they were able to get like eight million dollars out of the legislature last year, and they have more dollars put in. But we're talking billions of dollars in the project totally, so. Okay, so we'll have that to have a conversation about. Okay, my next item was, is the South Dakota Housing Loan Update. Okay, as I indicated before, in November, I had gone, moved away from the grant to the loan. Then they had asked for nine more items or questions or concerns, and I had submitted those. And then they came back to us, and they had two options to suggest to us. And so when we got those options, I called a meeting and with Stan and Rick and Carolyn and the Echo Valley Partners and the marketing agent, with Beverly Cots, who is the finance director in Pier, and Scott Rounds. And we had a Zoom meeting and visited with them about the two options, and the whole group really liked the option two. So again, that required more paperwork, and they urged us to have that back to them by tomorrow. Now, this meeting was last Wednesday, so we re, Stan and I, and redid those numbers to fit the new option, which is now a one-point-four million loan instead of a one-point-seven. And since it's their idea, I think that they are going to help us promote that with their board, which they will take that to the board on December sixteenth. So we did what they asked us to do. It's their idea. We'll see where that goes. But I want to also make it clear that even if they do approve that loan, they do give that to us, we will adjust that in our budget. We'll drop it from a one-point-seven loan to one-point-four. We'll use, now we have the bid amount, which we can use, which is also lower, so those are gonna trade out some of those numbers, but our budget will still be in deficit. Maybe not a one-point-five, but maybe like one-point-one or one-point-two. I just want to make sure we're clear on that, so no one misunderstands or thinks that this loan is, is our answer to all. It's just gonna be very helpful because of the percent, the finance rate on this option is extremely attractive compared to the market rate right now. So that's what's going on there. We'll see what happens on December sixteenth in Pier, and and they've just been very, very helpful. And then I was gonna also just do a quick LOVES update. There was a hearing in Rapid at the Penny County Courthouse on November twenty-eighth. The judge indicated that the purpose of that hearing was to make sure all information had been turned in from both parties. And the city attorneys also indicated that they responded to the debt by the deadline of November twenty-second to the LOVES comments, and they also submitted on November twenty-third a letter from an expert witness from Colorado. And he indicated why he thought those figures from LOVES were not relevant or reliable. And then the city attorneys also requested an extension in time, but the judge indicated this has been going on for three years, and it's time to move forward. So no extension was, was granted in time, timelines. Then the LOVES attorneys reviewed why this, they feel that the city is in, wall is in contempt. And also mentioned that their billing permit has been up for three years. Mr. Abraham then cited some court cases and responded with the city's ideas on why they are not in contempt. The judge said she viewed things differently. The court is trying to get things moving, and that she should have some kind of a ruling or decision in the next couple of weeks, which that mean it could be before our December twentieth meeting, but we haven't been real good on keeping up with our deadlines when they've been set, so it might be after the first of the year in the end. So that's what happened at the hearing in last week. So that brings us to the finance report then, Carolyn.
I was just gonna let you know that next week I will be out of the office a couple of days. One day attending the, well, both days actually, attending the South Dakota Municipal Board that I sit on. And we meet with the county and try to just work through our needs together and try to get a good working relationship. Not all the counties have good working relationships. So there's a representative from all counties that come, and we just try to sit at the table and get some things accomplished that way. So that'd be next Wednesday, Thursday, that part of Thursday I'll be back. And then so the beautification, I always look, and we're getting near the end of the year, that all of the budget requests have been paid out, that people have asked for. And the beautification committee has not spent all of their money for this year. They have a balance of fourteen hundred, one thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars. But they're also carrying a balance from twenty twenty-one as well. And so I, visiting with them, it was explained that because they weren't able to water the flowers on Main Street as long, because it just was a bad year. They couldn't tell if it was from the smoke or what all was maybe affecting the flowers, but their season was shorter, so that was the reason that they had so much to carry, or, yeah, so much balance to carry over. So they said that they would give up their carryover from twenty twenty-one, which is one thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents. But they would like to roll the one thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars from this year's budget into twenty twenty-three. And that has to be done by action for that to happen. So we're just bringing that, going to change guys to see what you're willing to do.
So what is the amount they wanted to roll for?
They want to roll one thousand four hundred ninety-seven.
And drop to twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
I could spend the twenty twenty-one real quick.
Depends.
Well, and maybe you want to give input.
No, I've spent enough for this year. Okay.
I'm moved to approve their request to waive the carryover from twenty-one and approve their carryover of fourteen ninety-seven from the twenty-two budget.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Jerry, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
And I abstained.
Okay, and let the record show that Kelly abstained. Okay, motion has carried then. Public Works, does someone have Garrett's information?
Well, I pretty much kind of put it in his agenda. That's he gave it to me. So he just wanted to let you guys know that they got the Christmas decorations up.
And they look very nice.
Yes, they do.
Thank you, Kelly.
And that he's still waiting to hear back from that Ed on the fossil thing. And Trevor is scheduled to attend a wastewater class in Rapid from December sixth through the eighth, and on the eighth, he will be testing certification. And then he was just gonna comment about attending that meeting, Mary, over the report as well. That's what he gave her.
All right. Any questions or concerns? We need to get back to Garrett then on anything? Okay, so are there any other items for discussion this evening?
Yes. When you first became mayor, you said, we want to be like Walt Disney World, clean. There's been a concern about Glen Street and Seventh Street, the Jekyll area, that it's they haven't, they kind of just walked away. They haven't been, as far as I know, haven't been back since about fifteenth of October. And do we want to have all that mess there through the winter, especially right at that stop sign?
It's kind of a lot of debris.
It really is.
I drove by it a couple of times today. It wouldn't take much to clean it up, make it more early.
But is there anything we can do? Can, it's just, you know, it's a nice source, comes down. Glen Street is as busy as Main Street, and it needs, if we want to have a nice clean town, we need to start doing that.
And then they built a, you know, I'm sure a very expensive attraction thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It would even be in their best interest to tidy it up.
I would, I would think so.
Those guys are really aggressive, too. I, I mean, I think if we, we ask them, they do that. Especially if it was a nice letter from the mayor.
I was thinking Garrett should disposs them.
I think Garrett has built a good relationship with them. He's worked with them.
There you go. Well, and I wonder if. If maybe some of that too is, I I don't know if they ever indicated about the parking in there. I know a lot of people who use the powerhouse do park in there. And I'm wondering if maybe until they get something up, that kind of deters people from parking in there. So maybe that would be a question that we would address at the same time. Don't they kind of have a rope dock?
They do.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, you know. Maybe that's because the stuff isn't cleaned up or also in case the roads come down, I don't know. They could even put up snow fence or something. Wouldn't be very expensive and like you keep people out of there.
Okay, so Garrett and I will approach um that. And we'll re- reflect your views and kind of give their thoughts. Let's see what they.
And if you're, once you're talking to them, they've got windows on the backside that are open. If they've got water or anything. Oh, they need shuttles.
On the back of their buildings?
Yeah.
Which side? The east?
Yeah.
East.
Yeah. Had a day that wind was, and it was bitter. I really hope they didn't have water on.
Okay. Our utility persons can probably tell us whether we have water.
I'm sure they don't.
I'm sure, yeah, 'cause I don't think there's any heat in the.
All right. We. Eric and I will work in that direction.
Thank you.
Great memory, Kelly. Walt Disney.
Oh.
The next session, council meeting, will be Tuesday, December twentieth at six thirty. As Tuesday night, um and we're avoiding the Christmas program by using Tuesday night.
Perfect.
Okay, with that, uh we do have a need for a couple of different items in executive session. So uh what's, could someone make a motion, please?
I make the motion. We go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCO one dash twenty-five dash two.
Second.
There's been a second motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we would like to meet with Lily and Zach first, if that's possible. And uh does anyone need? Okay, I will call the executive session out of session. Is there any um motions to be made relative? To events tonight?
I would like to make the motion that we give um Lilia Stone. Uh the authority to be able to um consult uh attorney Trask. Um for some recommendations pertaining to the ambulance board.
Mr. Second to that motion?
Same.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay, and Dan, please let the record show that Dan abstained from that uh vote. Okay, is there any other uh business for the good of the order? If not, meeting is adjourned.
All right, then I'm signing off.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep, thank you.